That's the French.
We have a public hearing. Is anybody here for the public hearing on Parrish Road?
No, I'm here for East Main Street.
Okay. And then we have East Main Street coming up after that. And then we have some planning office items. So with that, if we could go to the minutes.
I move to approve, Mr. Chairman, the draft meeting minutes for the 10 January 2018 Planning Board Meeting as written.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four yes, one absent. Vouchers are not applicable. We do not have any. Correspondence is from a neighboring town of Rowley, and I assume everybody has read that. So moving on to the public hearing.
Can we open at seven, Mr. Chairman?
Are we doing that time? Seven fifteen?
Was this a continuation or?
Yeah, this was a continuation.
Yeah, so I think we can. So.
There's no attachment to this staff report, so if there's anything beyond that first page, just tear it off. That's for the next item.
So if I could just get a motion to open.
I'll go to open the public hearing in the 66 Parrish Road.
Second. Motion has been made and been seconded to open the public hearing for 66 Parrish Road OSRD. All in favor?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Just a very quick question. Is that to open or to reopen?
Yeah, reopen.
Good clarification. Thank you, Harry.
I amend my motion without going through the whole thing.
Consider it amended. Any more discussion? No more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The meeting is reopened. John, you want to just give us a quick?
Yes, they were scheduled to come in this evening from our December meeting, but the plans haven't been revised yet. So they've asked for a continuance until the 14th of February. So those two next motions will take care of that.
You mentioned in here that they also need an extension of time?
Yes, and we have that in writing.
We do?
Yep. Form H.
Form H, okay.
Do we want to do that one first, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Could it please, I move to accept the applicant's written request to extend the review period of this OSRD application to the 31st of March 2018.
Second. Motion has been made and been seconded to accept the Form H for the extension of time for review of this, of the 66 Parrish Road application through March 31st, 2018. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we're looking for one more to.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Move to continue public hearing for 66 Parrish Road OSRD application to February 14th, 2018. At, somebody throw me a time.
Seven ten.
Seven oh.
Seven oh five.
I'm a born negotiator, seven oh seven. I'm an arbitrator.
Motion has been made and has been seconded to continue the hearing to February 14th, 2018 at seven oh seven.
I just have a quick question on the, just going back to the March 31st date. What's the prior date?
The prior date would have been just the middle of February.
Oh, okay. All right, because normally we.
Quarters.
Quarters.
Quarters to keep it straight, right?
So 31st of March.
That's the first quarter, right?
Right.
Yeah, that would be the first one.
Why it wasn't previously before the, oh, this is a brand new application, sorry.
Well, it isn't, isn't it, right?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Starting from scratch.
Okay.
Any more discussion? No more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four yes, one absent. Moving on to the East Main Street Recreation Park. And I think, are you presenting for them tonight?
So I think they were supposed to be.
If you are presenting, come on up.
Well, no, I think they were, I'm not presenting anything. I was here in support of opening the park. And I think it was supposed to be somebody from Park and Rec here to present or just, or talk about it.
Do they have a meeting today, right now, or?
I don't believe so, but they were scheduled.
Park and Rec was pretty empty.
Yeah. Jim.
Jim Demento said he was going to be here.
Yep.
Yeah, I thought he thought it was at seven thirty.
Because we had a hearing first?
Come back to it.
Yeah, all right. Let's, let's come back to that one then. And let's go to the planning office items. We have four of them. The first one is the OSRD. Draft. Matt, did you have anything? I'm just going to go around.
I don't have anything right at the moment.
Okay. Harry?
Do we want to take them one at a time? I'm seeing an A, B, C, a one, two, three, A, B, C. Do we want to look at the, this draft of the public hearing?
Well, I would.
I have a question about it.
Yeah, I would say, let's just, you know, you go through all of yours.
Oh, okay, cool.
And then Bob will go through all of his.
Just very quickly, the notice looks great to me. The only question in my mind is, did we do it already? Or are you waiting for an authorization to do it?
No, it's, it's in the works because we had to move forward because the deadline is.
Cool, great.
I did it as generally worded as I could, so we won't run into any trouble.
That's what we're doing. Explains what we're doing.
So just to clarify, it's not a draft. This is, this is the one that went.
Yeah. It's going to be in the record.
Okay.
Cool, cool. Plenty of time, 14 days there.
We have through all of March too, to whatever, whatever time it takes, we have through March too.
For sure.
Yeah.
I don't know where, where you wanted to go with this as far as B is concerned. I was looking at it and.
You're on page two.
I'm on page two, I'm sorry. I like all the, I like the idea of inserting a chart. I think it's a great idea. I think it'll help us really move forward with determining yield in the initial beginning periods of OSRDs. The question I have is, you know, when this goes, when we're actually putting this in a warrant article, how we're going to make an example of this yield plan zoning summary. And I think, I think it looks good. I like how you have the lot area with the gross footage. I like how you have the wetlands. We deduct that and you get the continuous buildable area. The only question I have is where 40,000 square feet minimum required came in. And I know it's an example, but.
That's, that's just the, the minimum lot area for a particular zoning district. So if, say the proposed lot area, the total.
Minimum lot area.
Sixty-five, you had 15,000.
Okay, because the header says CBA.
Yeah.
And I know that they can be two different things. The minimal lot area and the continuous buildable area can be two different things.
So that, so that should be changed, shouldn't it?
Well, you know, I mean.
Minimum lot area.
If you wanted to go that way, I thought what the, the goal here in conjunction with the slopes was to go a continuous, continuous buildable area, determine what that would be on the chart. And then potentially, at some point, go in and modify the definition of continuous buildable area, which is actually, what is that, D? In this, on page three?
That's the existing.
That's the existing. And I am looking through the town code. Continuous building area is something that's referenced many, many times in the intensity use table and in individual bylaws.
As continuous?
As continuous building area, CBA. And it also references 165-7 as the definition. My, my only problem with it is, as it says, the existing bylaw definition, 165-7 says continuous, continuous building area, but it basically says, shall not include any freshwater wetlands, don't let any pro chapter 161 or any pond and stream. That is a very good description of what continuous building area is not. But if I was looking that up, and keep in mind that this is in the section of our town code that, that explains what the definitions of these terms are, that doesn't strike me as a very strong definition of what something is by describing what it isn't in one line. So all the other times that continuous buildable, building area is referenced in all of the other bylaws and in our intensity use table, it refers you back to 165-7, it refers you back to this definition. And I just find that definition to be lacking. Very much lacking.
It's lacking compared to other communities, you know, and if Tilly was here and I made copies of what she wanted to hand out for this evening, but West Newbury, they have a very good bylaw and it's open space preservation development. That's what they call their OSRD. And they use contiguous there in that town, along with probably every other town I've come across. But in any event.
We have to be a little different.
Yeah. So they do have some real good definitions in here that if we wanted to incorporate them and if we wanted to take the time tonight to look at them, or I could pass them out for our next meeting.
May I, may I just throw out the idea that, again, in addition to the OSRD changes, which would have to go before town meeting, and in addition to the recreational marijuana bylaw, which would have to go before town meeting, and the recreational marijuana district, overlay district, which would have to go before town meeting, this would also, because this is a zoning definition, this would also have to be a separate and distinct amendment modification to our zoning bylaw. So it sounds like we're looking at one, two, three, if we wanted to tackle that this round, we're looking at three public hearings. The one that we're going to be in for, that we're noticing right now.
Yeah.
For OSRD, and we'd have to open two, we have to open another one for medical marijuana anyway. Excuse me, for recreational marijuana anyway, but we would also have to open one up specifically for this. I don't know if the board.
Couldn't be part of, that couldn't be part of a single hearing or simultaneous hearings? Because it's really related.
It is related.
I wouldn't want to decouple them, pass one and not the other.
Concurrent and occurring on the same night. Just, you know, naturally we'll have to go through public notice.
But we can't now, right? Because now this one's in the works, right?
What's that one have to do with anything else?
This is the OSRD. This is one of the things that has to go.
Right.
We can have them concurrently because this one's already scheduled for February 14th, right?
Right, but I don't think we'd be able to get a public hearing going right now. But I mean, we could certainly do something as simple as continuous building area at the same time that we're doing recreation. Recreation marijuana.
Why, why can't the definitions to avoid a public hearing be built into the OSRD bylaw?
With all due respect, I believe that that would only apply then, that definition of continuous building area to, only to.
Right.
OSRD. Whereas, if you did a little research, I can't find it right now, but there are many.
Nope, you're right.
Many instances throughout our town code.
You're right.
Continuous building area. They all point back to, as I said, 165-7, which is our definitions.
Well, we got to do it, so.
It is what it is. So at some point.
Now, we have to do what, technically, you know, we could live with, because it is referenced as continuous, continuous buildable area. We can continue working with that work, right? And it has a definition in the zoning as it is. And, you know, we can continue working with that until we decide as a community to change to contiguous and.
But didn't you just say that it wasn't defined?
I, I, I'm saying that.
It is defined.
When you look at it, that is your definition.
That is the.
That is the definition. You're going down the line, you go to C, and you find continuous building area, and that is your definition. If, if you consider that to be an adequate definition, then by all means, I'm talking through my nose.
It's not, it's not adequate.
I don't, I, I don't think you define something by saying two things that it isn't. So ironically enough.
John, what would be, what's your hesitation with?
I'm just trying not to open up a big can of worms into a bunch of little zoning amendments that we'll have to deal with. When, if we just focus in on this as it's being presented, we could, within this section of the zoning ordinance, we could create a chart that references contiguous building area and provides a definition within Section 7 also. It's, it's just specific to that section.
To Harry's point, and it would apply to this OSRD, but it wouldn't apply to any other.
Yeah.
It, I'm thinking of how those meetings, the, you know, the town meetings go, and everybody is so damn tired by the end of the night. And these ones come up at the end and this. But with that being said, with that being said, I think definitions are, are easy to understand quickly, which, you know, when you present, yeah, I can see presenting to the town, the OSRD change, this is what we're doing, and in that, there's a change here. And after this, we're going to change the definition in the other section of the zoning. And it's pretty straightforward.
It's linkage. There's a linkage there.
So I think people, even though they want to get out, I think, I guess I'm just.
In the same way, we're going to do recreational marijuana bylaw, but at the same time, there's a linkage because we need to adopt a map that shows the recreational marijuana overlay district.
People aren't going to.
They, they, they're.
They're probably not going to be questioning the definition by the time they get to that point if they pass the other. Because you will have covered it, you will have gone over it, and if they pass the other, it's going to be just a.
But that's the risk. I mean, if, if they pass one and don't pass the other.
Then they wouldn't have been listening.
And you can't hope that.
Well, yeah.
You ready for the real irony?
I, I mean, I guess that's always possible.
I mean, that's, that's the risk. I mean.
Yeah, but. And it's our job, then we haven't done our job well. Then it's our job to get up and explain to it, explain that.
That's why I was wondering if they could be linked, if they could be linked explicitly.
Are you saying, put them both together in one public hearing to save a public hearing, or?
No, when we take it to the, to the town, have a single vote for both, because they are linked.
Well, although we would have to have separate public noticed hearings, are we required to have separate warrant articles? Could not, something like that also be included in?
Typically, it's, it's separate.
Typically, yeah. Just to keep it simple.
Because it's a different item you're actually voting on.
But again, it's a different item that's intimately connected. Now, I have questions about whether it needs to be changed at all because it is inclusive, with the exception of wetlands streams.
Well, I think.
So it's everything.
Well, I think, I think.
Is there anything?
Yes, yes.
What, what, what else would be?
Well, I, I think, I think slopes over 25% would be excluded. I think contiguous wants to be defined in a way that there's a minimum width of land that connects this chunk to this chunk so that people aren't snaking a little tiny thing to connect two pieces.
Dairy.
Basically. So there's, you know, there's like a hundred foot minimum dimension of width so that therefore you actually can put a road through if you had to. Things, those were a couple of the ones that I had. I think, Harry, you already picked up on some.
I picked out a couple of them. I think it's something that's, it's an important enough definition.
Yeah, it is.
That I think we, we could spend, you know, 20 minutes, a half an hour, some night having a public hearing for.
Yeah.
I don't think there'd be a huge hue and cry from the, from the general public as far, they're not going to break out the pitchforks or anything. Nor are they going to lift us up on their shoulders and carry us, but.
That's never going to happen.
I think that. So, you know, and I think, and I think the town voters, for the most part, they're pretty smart. They know that when we're changing the definition, especially since we'll be adding to this definition. I can't see changing any of that wording, other than saying what continuous building area is.
Correct.
I, I think they.
I mean, there's so many great definitions out there that we can draw from. West Newbury, which I copied.
You're not going to find the best one, I know you are.
The other, the other thing is, we, we do not, as a town, have a slope restriction as part of our definitions. So that would be another thing that.
Great segue to C. Great segue to C.
Yeah. And that's, that was in North, that's in North Reading.
Yeah.
And they're 33%. You know, again, it's typically 25%.
25 is pretty darn steep.
And they call it protected slopes, but I really like, you know, with the, with the, with the difference, the, the only objection is protected slope. You know, we changed that to steep slope. And, you know, the 33, the three to one versus the 25% sounds.
25 is.
Yeah, 25 is typical.
It's, it's 25% or greater.
Right, right. So I mean, I'm looking at D there on page three, saying that.
Basically, it's saying you're not going to flatten anything out that has more than 33 and a half.
Well, interestingly enough, with the OSRD, a steep slope, I believe, is mentioned in the beginning of OSRD. That's one of the things that you subtract out. I believe it is either a primary or a secondary conservation area, whatever it's referred to, protected area, where you don't use that as part of your development. So that you don't have to chop down these hills or build into them, or build these 40-foot retaining walls so that you can build a parcel.
Yeah.
So interestingly enough, it's in OSRD.
Yes.
But also, there are other steep slopes is also, I, and again, I'm, I'm seeing steep slopes being built into the definition of continuous buildable area in the same way.
They should be, they should be the same.
Well, the same way that we exclude wetlands.
Yeah.
Exclude a steep slope.
Correct.
So.
But that's another column in the chart, so that.
So, 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 so I don't mean to nudge this forward, but how do we want to wrap this up right now? Do we, we want to, no, come back and put on the agenda the definition issue?
Yeah.
And have that come back?
Absolutely. I'm, I'm, I'm good with, like, let's, let's post a public hearing, appetizing hearing. We've got to do it.
Okay, so, just so I'm clear, we're all in agreement that the added chart language to the, all the amendments we're proposing for the OSRD is fine. It's just that the definition, and we want to move towards a new definition, that would be contiguous buildable area.
Continuous.
Because we won't change all the other continuous ones that are throughout the, the zoning, we'll keep it continuous. But we will change the definition to include 25% of these items.
Yeah, okay.
So not the, not the name itself.
Don't want it to be contiguous. It's not, contiguous is not mentioned anywhere in our zoning.
Okay, so we're going to change the definition of continuous buildable area within the definition section of the zoning.
165-7.
All right, so everything will be copesthetic in reference throughout the zoning ordinance that reference that, that term.
Yeah.
Which will have.
They actually reference 165-7 over and over and over again.
Okay.
The, the truly ironic part about it is, I was talking to Tilly this morning, and, you know, she kind of thought she wasn't going to be here. According to Tilly, and I haven't done the research yet, but I will, I have the time to do it. She's under the impression, if you notice, it says it was added June 11th, 1990.
Where are you, sir?
Continuous buildable, buildable, building area on page three.
Yeah.
Notice how it says it was added June 11th, 1990 there, Article 37?
Mm-hmm.
She's under the impression that there was some type of a typo where there was more to this, but it got cut off. And I'm going to research that. I'm going to look back.
What year was that?
1990.
1990.
I.
611, 1990. We've made many changes to the use table and things such as that.
Yeah.
Which did affect CBA.
Yeah.
And, you know, we, we've done a lot of changes to the intensity use ta, table, et cetera, et cetera.
I, I was, I was surprised when I saw the continuous building area definition in, in the packet this way because I didn't remember it that way. So I, I don't know what.
It's possible that that's of a E-code error.
Yeah, so.
It's possible.
I appreciate the research on that.
Oh, yeah. Love that one. I'm going to dig that one up.
So can we, we'll schedule a, a public hearing for the definition discussion, might as well.
Tilly did bring to my attention, and I don't know if she CC'd everybody else, a couple of minor, minor additional points to this, if we want to stay on it.
And we're just going to finish this agenda item, and then we're going to go to the Park and Rec.
So she has two items, and the first one is, she thinks that the title for the, for Article 7 should actually read Article 7, OSRD, Special Permit, and I just changed some wording in another document that I wrote. Special Permit Pursuant to Mass General Law 48, Section 9, together with the Planning Board Subdivision Regulations. So she would like that section, the title of it changed, to better reflect what's actually going on with that particular section.
Can you help me connect?
How does it read right now?
Can you help me connect the dots?
Yeah, how does it read right now?
Hold on.
Because I don't have a copy of my OSRD in front of me, I'm sorry.
One second.
Yeah.
I will connect all the dots. Here we go. So in this draft copy of the OSRD amendments, which incorporate Harry's comments as well as Tilly's, so top of the first page, Article 7. That'll read as what Tilly would like it to read. And it is amending what's already there, but it will read Article 7, Open Space Residential Development, Special Permit Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, and Chapter 365 Georgetown Planning Board Subdivision Regulations.
I don't understand really what the difference is.
Right now, the article reads Article 7, Open Space Residential Development.
Right.
So the underlined is, is.
Is the added, that would be an extension of the title.
Yeah.
I don't know if it really does need to get into, you know, a lengthy title like that.
What, what is important is traditionally, you don't want to use an abbreviation by itself as a main header. You, you want to once first spell it out and then thereafter, if you want to use.
Yes, yeah, underneath, that's how it is spelled out. Underneath, you read it one more time in its full terminology, open space residential development, and then in parentheses.
And that first A.
I guess.
Good to me. I mean, I don't see.
I guess I'm not seeing what the, the need is, the need is, and what the difference is. You guys?
I mean, the only difference is that she doesn't want to see, and Chapter 365, and she doesn't want to see Georgetown Planning Board, Georgetown Subdivision Regulations, and it stops at Section 9, and she doesn't spell out open space residential development.
Well, maybe this is something that we can get into a little bit more when the hearing actually opens.
I think it's a good idea.
Because it, it looks to me like what you have here, John, incorporates everything that Tilly is talking about and actually clarifies it, giving it chapter and verse, Chapter 365, et cetera. I mean, so.
Rather concern, number two, which also includes a note. It's really in-depth. I don't think we really should bother going over it without Tilly being here. It's actually an interpretation of philosophy.
Yeah. Yeah.
Maybe this is better handled when, when we open the hearing and Tilly's actually here to explain what we're, we're looking at.
I agree. I agree.
Yeah. And since we'll be dealing with this for up to two or three more meetings, you know, we, we should have time to iron everything out.
Definitely.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, did, not to delay anything, but there was a, an F, incentive language providing for smaller size houses within the OSRD.
Okay, right, yeah.
I'm on page four.
Good point, Harry. That was another issue that we talked about at the last meeting.
What is it that you're referencing?
It's just, I, I'm looking at it, and it seems as though John's come up with some simple way to deal with the problem. way to deal with the problem that we have where we would like to incentivize development that creates smaller houses, whether it's at a twenty-five hundred square foot level, fifteen hundred square foot, whatever that, or whatever people feel comfortable looking at and saying, well, this is a big house, this is a small house, this is an affordable one, this isn't. I, I, I like the idea of what you're trying to do, that we're trying to incentivize that, I really do.
It's, it's a real simple way of doing it, too. If, if all of the houses within a development I proposed at twenty-five hundred square feet or smaller, then they would be, they would.
A lot of bonus.
Now, Tilly had me grab for tonight West Newbury's.
Very interesting, West Newbury, very interesting. They talk about.
There's too much in this.
I know, I know.
They're like fifteen hundred square feet, but if I, if I understand that correctly, their incentive is that you, if you build smaller houses, you get them at a bonus, up to twenty percent more over your yield.
They have.
Which is very interesting, and thank you for printing this up, John.
Thank you. They have a number of incentives in there. You know, if you put an accessory living unit in a single family, in a number of those, you're entitled to upwards of twenty percent additional living units within the development. There's like, there's three different categories of which you could increase the development density, but ultimately, it's not more than twenty percent of what the lot yield would provide.
Good. So, getting back to F, what do you need from us with regards to this tonight?
If you want to keep it simple, and, you know, we're really just trying to, if at all possible, introduce smaller-sized houses than what the market is looking for. And by doing so, you, you add the possibility of one or two additional units. And what I'd like to see, if the board wants to, say, limit that size to twenty-five hundred square feet.
See, I, myself, I think that, that is a little high. For me, I would, on page forty-nine of the West Newbury bylaw, I would.
Two thousand.
I'm fine with two thousand, but I would copy this in, in its entirety, forty-nine, six B, number B, where, where the West Newbury bylaw.
What page?
Page forty-nine.
Fifteen hundred.
Uh, you said.
Yeah, but.
Sorry, Matt, we're right, forty-nine?
Yep, you're on forty-eight.
Forty-eight, that won't work. That's why I'm not seeing it.
Can you use your X-ray vision?
If, if we would copy that in its entirety, just to switch from fifteen hundred to two thousand, I, I think that that.
Switch from twenty-five hundred to two thousand.
Uh, taking their forty-nine, every number B, if, taking their fifteen hundred, moving it up to two thousand, I would say that, that, that's a, that's done language, that, you know, why reinvent the wheel?
Yeah, don't, don't reinvent.
Do we have a, do we have a definition for gross square foot in the ordinance? Because that can be.
Right.
That needs to be tied down.
Well, finished gross floor area is that.
Is that a, is that a building code terminology? I think, I think that's something you might want to get away in from.
It, it could be, and we, we, you know, we could be consist, we probably want to be consistent with it, unless the way that's written, you know.
I can.
Is, doesn't, isn't, isn't consistent with the intent of what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I can check with less.
Yes.
Gross is usually outside wall, net is inside.
Yep. Well, sometimes, though, they exclude other rooms within there.
Yeah.
And, and my only argument for staying on the smaller side is, I'm not saying that a two thousand or twenty-five hundred isn't, isn't on the small side, it is compared to what the developer's looking to build, but if we want to give them an incentive, what's the most benefit to the town? What we're looking for, for the town, what's the, the, the deficit in the town? And that repeatedly comes up with, with smaller houses. And I, so I think that fifteen hundred or two thousand square foot really hits that, whereas twenty-five hundred is, you know, again, approaching the, you know, the larger size.
I agree completely on the twenty-five hundred, and I, I feel like there should be probably a little bit of research and time given to deciding this number, because it's a very important number.
That's what, yeah, absolutely.
And I, I, my gut response is fifteen hundred, but I would want to be sure that we've done our research and we're not going to.
I, I would advocate fifteen hundred, too, so, I, I, you know, two thousand was a compromise, but I just don't know who that, who that researched, who that, you know, resource would be.
Interestingly enough.
I, I think, I think real estate agents would be good resources for saleable, you know, like square foot, what they're getting for pricing and whatnot, that would be one place to turn.
Could I ask, are we, are we pretty much in agreement that moving forward with something like this, even though we may, at this point, not be locking down the fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred square foot number, whatever that number is, X, let's call it X right now, but we're pretty much along this idea?
Yeah, I think we're all aligned with that.
Is this something, if I could ask, are we looking at it as a, as a replacement to what John suggested? The simple, easy increase? Because I, I see these as different, these, these seem to be different, and while it's all going to be in the end yield, are we saying to a developer, if you have a lot yield of ten, we're going to let you build eleven? Or are we going to let you build twelve, as long as the ten full-size mini mansions, McMansions? Are, are you getting two, I'm going to call them cottages, not to, not to make them sound small, but I'm going to call them cottages, are you going to build, be able to build two additional cottages on that, on that plot? Do you still get your ten full-size thirty-five hundred square foot homes? Or are you losing one of those? And I think that's important from a, from the, from the perspective that we really do want to provide an incentive. We, we, we can, we can argue about this and come up with great ideas and study it and put anything down on a piece of paper, but the bottom line is, when the developer looks at it and runs a spreadsheet, if he doesn't make, if he makes more money by not building them, it's not going to work. He's, he's not going to avail himself, he or she is not going to avail himself of the opportunity. It has to be a real, honest-to-God incentive.
So, the way I read this, if he had a, a yield of ten.
Which one?
Uh, the, the.
Section B.
The section B.
Section B, go ahead.
The way I read this, if, let's say there was a yield of ten, he could, the way I look at this, he could get for every.
Every single family dwelling unit.
Yeah, so, if he built eight McMansions and then built two cottages, he could build an additional two cottages.
I'm reading that a different way.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm reading that, that for, yes, yes, if he does two.
He could get two more.
He gets two more because he's, I mean, he maxes out at twenty percent.
So, the first eight could be McMansions, there's nothing preventing that.
Right. But, the way that it's being described loosely here, because it's, we're in draft, it sounds like, in F there, under our incentive language, it sounds as though every house, every one of the lots would have to be restricted to below the, whatever that square footage number is, to get a bonus at all.
That's how I wrote it.
And, and it's written that way, and I understand what you're, what you're going for there. I, I just, I fail to see where, and I haven't run the numbers, but just intuitively, I don't see a developer going for that.
Going for a hit.
Going for that one, no, I don't.
For John's language.
I, I, I don't think the money's there.
And it is all about the numbers.
I think you'd make more money, building your ten units and saying, yeah, that's nice, I, I don't want the incentive.
Ten McMansions and then.
Yeah, and I make my money, yeah.
The only way I could see, John's way of working is we'd have to go way above twenty percent. You know, if, if, if we said we could increase the yield by, by fifty percent, so instead of building ten McMansions, he can build fifteen cottages, should be gender-specific, the developer could build fifteen cottages, well, there's an incentive there.
Absolutely, and I understand where you're going.
But then that gets into other problems with, you know, resources for the town and things like that.
I'd go so far to say that, to actually, if you take away a McMansion, you're going to have to give them more than two cottages. Two cottages does not equal one McMansion, I don't believe, because they have to build them. Still using a lot of wood, it's concrete, there's roofing material, there's sinks, cabinetry, plumbing, electrical wire. No, it's, it's more, it's, it's up there.
Three small kitchens, more than one fancy kitchen.
I believe it, yeah. But yet, I'm only getting reduced amount of money, and, again, this is, we're going to have to tweak it, but I, I like, I like where we're going, I really like where we're going.
We, we could reach out to West Newbury and see what the result of this bylaw has.
There you go, now you're talking. See how many people have jumped on the bandwagon with it?
If you give an incentive large enough, right, what happens is there, there will be a rush to do that, and you won't have any of the other stuff happening, the market rate, or the market size houses. This is what happened in my previous position.
The market.
It was three times the incentive for older-person housing, and that's all we were getting was older-person housing. We had to cut it in half, and it was still too much. And the second year, we had to cut it back, because that's, you know, per acre, they could make twice as much money than building a single-family house in that particular market. So, if it's too much of an incentive, that's all you're going to get, and the, the, the trouble for developers in, in town here without sewerage and high groundwater, water, water everywhere, you know, if it's not ledge, it, it's the land that keeps the yield down more than anything else. You know, try to find continuous buildable area and taking out the wetlands and kind of working your way around the property, and it has to maintain a certain width and depth, and, you know, before you know it, you might think you have two lots, but you end up with one, if you're lucky. So, the, the density of development is really restricted because there is no sewerage. You know, trying to take care of the septic needs on the terrain that you have to deal with, it's tough.
Question from the audience?
Um, sure.
I think I'm getting the gist of what you're doing, and it sounds great, but I'm wondering, what type of lot size are you saying these cottages would be on? Would they now be on a smaller lot size? Because many times, if it's not a smaller lot size, then what is reasonable or affordable, many times, once one person buys it, can double in size, and now it's no longer a reasonable house. If you follow what I'm saying. I mean, if, if you drive down Lot Ma Street in the Meadowview, Chow Street area, they were all built as reasonable-sized ranches on the normal-sized lot, though. So, after time, I would say more than fifty percent of those houses now are double the original size that they were. So they're no longer a.
Got sold.
A, you know, a reasonable-priced house, because the people have had the opportunity to enlarge them. Just throwing that idea out, if the lot sizes are small with setbacks that don't allow for expansion, then your cottage can, after a number of years, turn into a mini McMansion instead of a cottage.
And a Frankenstein McMansion, too, because they.
Yeah, yeah, because they try to fit it with setbacks. Well, this is OSRD, and the idea is that when you're in the development concept stage, you take your, your yield, and you take any bonus dwellings, units that you would get, and then at that point, then you draw your lot lines. So, an interesting point.
I, I.
But they'd be subject to whatever the zoning regulations for that, that.
That's what I'm doing. Not necessarily, because it's OSRD and it's special permit, and one of the things we regularly do is waive the, the sizes of the lots. A lot of times, if, if it's an OSRD in the RRC district, instead of an eighty thousand, two acres lot, you, we, we allow a one-acre lot, with the idea that we are preserving sixty percent of the open space on the entire tract. And presume that, in our judgment, we're going to balance that in some way.
I, 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 every time we get to this.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, every time I get to this point in this process, it is rewriting ordinances, writing ordinances is a complex issue, and I'm just going to say it, there, there are people who are trained to do this, and we are not that, and we are not that, and we're doing the best we can with the intelligence that we have and the experience we have, but all of these questions, you know, fifteen hundred, seventeen fifty, two thousand, what Gary's talking about, it, it's a very complicated process, and I.
There are a lot of weeds in here, water around.
I just, I, I get, I'm just going to say again, I, I just get frustrated with the, with the, with the form of government that we have and the way this all works, and, and these volunteer boards making these kinds of determinations. It's, it's, it's complicated stuff, but I, I just, whatever. So, anyways, how do you guys want to proceed?
Would it be, as a suggestion, would it be possible to include this as potential draft language? And when I say this, I, I mean the.
Paragraph B.
The, the paragraph B from.
West Newbury.
West Newbury, and also have the one that John's talking about, the one that John proposed, and put it in his draft language, and when we open the hearing, chat it out, that's a good place to talk about it, and modify it, by then we'll have done a little bit of homework, I would hope. We can exclude the one we don't like, keep them both, modify them both.
Maybe have a conversation with West Newbury between now and then and see how things have gone, and. Because they might say, we've had this on our bylaws for ten years, and there's not been, there's not been a single developer that's ever come forward with anything like this.
Yeah, and you can put the, on, on the heading can say incentive for, can say incentive language, but if it doesn't provide real incentive, it's just so many words.
If it doesn't require them, that's really the issue, if it doesn't require them to do it, they're going to go for the most bang for the buck.
Right.
You don't pay four hundred thousand dollars or more for a lot and put a three hundred thousand dollar structure on it or four hundred thousand dollar structure, you put six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollar structures.
That's how you make your money.
It's always, it's a bad investment if you're putting a structure on there that's worth less than what you're paying for the land. It makes no sense, and they're not going to do it.
But by providing smaller parcels, which we can do.
Yeah, right.
The other thing I would be worried about is that the developer would turn around and say, well, I need to build, building ten lots, I need to build, build two affordable, oh, great, I'll put two cottages, and now that's not my affordable requirement.
Another good point, and I thought of that, but you would have to specifically point out that those are not the affordable, those do not count towards the affordable inclusive.
But to be fair, that would really be the best affordable units, because those might actually be affordable for people to move forward to living in.
Well, something we need to talk about.
Do. Is there an alternative in terms of getting some expertise? I mean, certainly, you have experience, knowledge, John, we can perhaps get some experience from, from West Newbury. Other communities, are, are there other resources that we can get access to?
Yeah, I mean, there's so much on the internet, I mean, any town out there, and West Newbury is a great example. I think it's really well-written, it's the same ordinance we have, but it's a little bit more in detail.
When did they last update theirs, do you know?
Um, the same era. I mean, it's almost a reflection of what we did, they just call it something different, and they get into the bonuses more, but everything else, this is pretty much the same language.
It says two thousand eight.
Except they do use.
It was all around Green Communities Initiative.
Yeah, yeah, you can tell this was in vogue early part of the century for all the communities. This is what was going on, OSRDs or.
Yeah.
Open space preservation, that went from PDUs to this.
Well, and, and before that, they called it cluster development, and then BUDs.
BUDs.
OSRDs.
They, you know, they got to keep up with the car industry, new model, new year.
Hey, it's a new, new OS system, maybe it's got an OS ten or a lot of.
I want to try to wrap this section up, just a couple minutes, going to take two more minutes. Is it, is it possible for this board to pick one or the other for this meeting versus putting them both in for the public hearing?
I'd like to see them both. I'd like to see them both, to be perfectly honest with you. It's a public hearing process. It's, it's, it's designed to get information from, from the public. I mean, maybe a miracle will happen and we'll actually have developer in the, in the audience. Maybe we'll have a Realtor in the audience. Stranger things have happened.
You guys?
Maybe they can give us some information.
If, if you're not
I, I mean, I don't have a problem including both, but my, my, my gut feeling on, on John's language is if we limit them to only building exclusively uh, smaller units, that's just something that they're never gonna take us up on. That's my gut.
Mine.
Okay, alright, so can we do that, John, then? Can we put the two of them on and I have a uh, public hearing for this. So the um, John, thanks for that information too. So that was planning office item number one. Continuing the review of the OSRD. Till we will be back next time. So now we're gonna go back to the uh, review status of the East Main Street Recreation Park. And Jim, do you wanna, wanna come on up? How are ya?
Not bad, how about you? So maybe I should give you a quick summary of what's going on. So the last time I think I was here, we had started the bidding process of phase two. Um, so we had the dog park in, we had the ball filled in. Uh, we had the, had money to go out to bidding on phase two. Um, we did the, which would have been the park and lot, the skate park area. Um, when we went out to bid, none of the bids came in. They were all over budget. So we have now, we stopped doing any major work on phase two. But at the same time, we had a group, well, subsequent, yeah, later, we had a group came in. And there's been talk about possibly coming back for a change of um, the original permit for a, a possible basketball courts as well. We told the, the uh, camp county committee that we would, you know, we would you know, um, if enough people in town wanted that to happen, we would come back. Um, of course, the conservation would be the major issue with impervious soils and area and stuff like that, but we would entertain. Doing that, putting, you know, going back and making design changes if culmination of the, the town people agree it would be something that was beneficial and the planning board and the conservation also. But at the same time, we're now on our second year of seed, we have seeded the fields and the fields are ready to be played on. Um, we have phase one, which is the fields and the dog park ready, and we have phase two, which is not ready. And, and there's people who wanna get on those fields because especially in the spring. There's a lot, they wanna get on there for lacrosse practices and such. Um, and would like to be able to take a portion of the recreational area and, and make it open to the public. Um, and we're looking a little bit for the, the planning board's guidance, do we um, Mike Farrell seemed to think we had an insurance issue, that we should have someone review it, an engineer review the area for issues. We're, we're still working on signage and, and stuff. But this is a little bit new to us, cause we've never really built a park before, so looking for a little bit guidance, what's the next phase of getting it open?
John, do you wanna uh, offer any overview before the, the board starts to respond? If not, I'll just jump in.
At this time, I'll just reserve.
Okay.
Moment.
So my understanding of, of what's transpired, Jim, is that um, I think it was um last, does the board mind if I I, I think it was last uh, last summer, that I don't remember her name. Um, so, a woman, a very nice person, who was trying to help you guys out, uh, stepped in, was going to try to get this opened.
Juliette, I think?
I, could be, could be. And she was, she was sort of taking it on at that point. And, and she and I had a conversation, and I was very clear with her at that time, that sounds great, I'm glad you're taking it up, let's get this thing open. But we need um, some information from you guys, which is the um, as-built plans. And um, the uh, field reports that are associated with while things are being constructed, the reviewing engineer.
Yep.
And so that was, then I didn't hear anything from, from her then, and then um this issue came up, I, I'm not sure how long ago, it's, it's, when, when did it come to our attention again, that they were looking to open? Couple months ago?
Yeah, right, say, right after Thanksgiving.
Something like that. And I, and I think um, John's been very clear in his communications with that, just repeating what I just said back in the summer, um, that this is what we need. Um, our hands are tied until we get that information. And then uh, I think um I even spoke with you about it at some point in time. Um, and then I spoke with the surveyor and I actually thought that the surveyor said he had the plan done.
Plan's been, the plan's been in town, it's been done for two months.
So we don't have that, and we've been asking for that.
The, the only thing I have
As-built, as-built plan.
The only thing we have is what William G. Holt, um, surveyor.
Right.
An engineer provided, and that was a proposal to have the work. I never got the plans.
He's got the plans, he's actually had copies, well, Steve got a copy, Puzinski, cause he, he requested one of conservation. But at the same time, I, I think he said he dropped one off with you. We, we talked about this last week and I also remember, and I forwarded him, I forwarded him the, the conversation that we had had about not having cause you said you, I, I sent it to you and you said it was, it's not attaching correctly or something.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I ever got electronically or hard copy wise was this proposal from Holt.
And I, and I, and I, I think, I think importantly, that, that more than several times, we have been saying, we don't have it. We don't have it, we need it, we don't have it.
We talked last week about, um, it's, it's been in, it's been, it's been stamped. And it was a question originally from Steve, you know, that he needed a hot copy, so we had him drive down.
Is there an electronic version?
I don't know.
Yeah, there's electronic, I've been sending.
So, so nothing has changed from the planning board's position from what was communicated last summer.
Right.
And, and that is, there's information we need in order to fulfill the order of conditions and to open up the park.
So the only outstanding one, there's twelve engineers, engineers reports that are in your hands. The as-built
They're in our hands?
They're in your hands. And that was a request you made last year, and we, we, we got those to you. I'll double that, I'll double that up to give you those again. And then this as-built is should be
So, okay, yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll send it again. But those are the only um, yeah, I mean, on Thanksgiving time, we I, I know Bill Holt was working on it and I, I pinged him like, cause I knew the winter was starting and he wouldn't be able to get with coverage, so he went out immediately and did it.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure, so I'll make sure that you have all that stuff tomorrow.
So that's great. Then as soon as we get that, you know, what we will do is we will review it eh, for compliance with the order of conditions. And, and basically the punchline is just to make sure that um, what is going to be opened, that A, what has been built is consistent with the plans and it's the health, safety, welfare issue.
Yeah.
And it's, that's it. So um, once we have that information, then we're gonna give it to um, you know, our technical review agent uh, for that.
Right.
Take a look at that.
And sometimes you ask the, the, we, we, we have the funds to do that, so I want, so don't have a problem with you hiring him, use this as a reason, you know, no need to say, you know, we got the funds, so go ahead and do it. Once, once you get everything you need.
So you will get the plan to John?
Tomorrow? I mean, I'll send the electronic, but I'll have Bill Holt drive a, a ma- a, a hard copy.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, definitely.
And then um, the twelve copies, I have it on my old computer, but I have hard drives, I'll find it and send those to
Were those field reports? Were they throughout the entire construction process, right up till the end?
They're up to, yes, up until last year. Now, the only thing we did last year was, was two things. We had to put um, we had electrical design done. Um, but we never, we have never instituted the electrical design, because it was, it was seventy-five thousand dollars to run it from the street to the, the fields.
Were those the conductors, Jimmy?
Those are the conductors.
They have the poles, but the conductors aren't in, right?
Right, we didn't actually, we didn't actually, well, we have the, we have the, we build the electrical to the top of the hill. We never, we never put a flank down to the, because it was seventy-five thousand dollars to go from the top of the hill to a transformer down to the bottom. And we, 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 we could, we didn't have it at that point. Um, there was, there was other things, so we actually put in a, a generator temporarily to, to run, cause we were, we were fields, the fields were gonna die. So we got a generator installed now, um, just to provide for the sprinkler system. But um, everything else is, like I said, to what was, what's going on. But we actually hired a, we, we hired an in, an engineer, Townsend, to do that design work. So I can get a field report from him for that portion, but that's the only thing that's not included on the twelve.
So i- as long as, as long as the field reports are from an engineer and they're stamped
Yeah.
And, and they're saying, this is what has been built and it's according to the plans, and if it's not, this is how it's different.
Okay, cause the as-built shows those changes, but I can actually um, you know, that it was designed to
I'm sure there'll be some questions after we review the plans too. There's something I did wanna mention, the order of conditions. Um, whatever came of the lighting?
So the lighting was originally gonna be a um, I, we talked about a solar lighting and I, I, we, going back, we put one up. And it wasn't, it wasn't enough, it wasn't what the church wanted, and it just wasn't providing enough light. The lighting, that portion of the, the driveway is in the church's property. We have a, we have a right, a easement on, on the, on their side of the wall. There's an easement we have for, for putting up lighting in the fence. And right now, they, Dave Shaw was in charge of that. He wanted to, they're tied into the church's lighting. They're gonna use the church's electricity and actually provide hot electricity to the lights. So
This sounds a little
Can I, can I, if, if I remember correctly, Jimmy, there wasn't enough room for the wall, so the wall is technically on the church land, but we have an easement?
The, the wall is on the line.
It's on the line, okay.
So we have an easement because of that.
So we had to get an easement, right?
We had to get an easement.
Okay.
The easement gives us, I think, six feet off the wall too. So when we put the, we put the, the split rail fence up, um, it was a safety factor, the members were concerned about anybody sliding down the hill. Could go on, so we, we put the fence up as well. I originally wanted a, the church requested, had requested lighting. Um, the members thought there was, lighting would be important, people walking up the hill without um, sidewalks. So um, the park and rec members voted to put lighting up. And then my thought at that time was the easiest way to do that would be us type of solar light. And when we agreed, I'd put something up, would look at it, but we, it just didn't work. It didn't seem like it was gonna give out enough light. So at that point, the park and rec members voted to have Dave oversee that portion of the project. And he was working with the church to, um, he got, they, they, they put in a conduit, ran electricity to the certain positions and they're running lighting now. He, he might be here, he might be.
What are they, what, what lighting? What kind of lighting?
Um, it's gonna, it's the, the soft twenty-two hundred K, whatever you want, it's gonna be LED lighting. But it's not gonna be the white, it's gonna be, no, the bulb can be anything. It can be incandescent or it can be, it's gonna be a, it can be LED, white or yellow or incandescent. It's got, it's a, so I don't have the actual design.
So I guess, I, I guess what I wanna say, this is not public roadway lighting.
Right.
And that lighting is gonna be approved by the planning board before you do it.
Well, it's on church's property.
That's fine.
And is the church paying for it, is the
No, but pa- pa- we, we paid for it.
Who maintain, it sounds confusing. Who, who maintains it if something goes wrong?
They're actually gonna pay the lighting costs, but we'll maintain the lights themselves. Though, when their light turns on, the, those lights, the off, light goes off at two o'clock in the morning, their light turns on and dusk goes off at two o'clock.
Interestingly enough, when we bought that parcel of land from them, uh, even though that drive is technically town owned land. Uh, the church has a perpetual easement in perpetuity to Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So it's a, it's, it's a, it's a cooperative symbiotic type of relationship we have with that parcel. The two parcels share.
So regardless of if the lights are on the church's property or not, um, it's lighting a um, you know, a public access way. And so that's not a roadway lighting, uh, public roadway lighting, um, street lighting. So those lights, eh, do not just go and put those in. Make sure that they come and we see what they are and
I'll, I'll notify Dave of that.
Yep.
Yeah, you're not the light department, buddy.
So, um, so that, that was my question about the lighting. And then I, I, I pulled out the order of conditions from, this was back in two thousand fourteen, a long time ago. And uh, um, I'm, I know that when you install a sign you know, that's part of the approval process and so I, I won't go through the special conditions that are on the order of conditions, but you know, just make sure that these items are covered and
Yeah, we're gonna have really probably the, well, we'll see with the checklist, but there'll be we'll have to have signs at the dog park area as well, because that's there'll be, but eh, yeah, I'll make sure I read that section clearly.
Okay.
Chairman, can, can I just back up, because I, I know a lot of this happened when I wasn't able to be here and stuff, uh, I was working nights and stuff. At, at this point, in order to open the park so that we can use the park.
Which is the goal?
Which is, of course, it's a park. So the kids can play there, GA can play there, and anybody can go down there. At this point, the insurance, it, it can't be covered until we issue a certificate of completeness? Is, is that what the goal here is? Can somebody help me out here?
What?
Because
Are you talking about what's the goal with insurance?
Well, my, my understanding is right now, we're, we're heading towards a, a completion of the order of conditions.
Right.
We haven't built the park yet, so it's only
Partially.
It's, yeah, we haven't, I mean, this, this is a whole Yeah, phase one, so
That, that's
How do we complete?
Well, that's, that's where it's a great question, it's gonna have to be answered after we get these as-built plans and we see what's in place versus what the approved project was. We have to take a look at that, and then we can answer your question. Because I think, I'm only speaking for myself right now, but my goal is to try to find a way that we can protect the town, do our job. Um, and in recognizing that this park is now morphed into several phases and it's not what was originally talked about and there are changes perhaps coming. And see if we can compartmentalize those and put those over here and make sure we don't lose sight of them and deal with this part that has been built, and if it meets the health, safety, welfare, and you can park and you can drive and you can see at night and uh, gates are, the basics are there. Try to make this thing open. And, and somehow we, I, I don't know what the language is with that, Harry, how we do that.
Yeah, that, that
Cause it's a different
That's concerning me, because eh, it, it sounds on one hand as though we're saying show us an as-built so we can give you a certificate of completeness, but obviously we can't. It's not complete as per the plant, the plan.
Correct.
Um, so, and I know you're out of money.
No, no, but no.
Phase two, you didn't have enough money before to do phase two, so you don't have it now.
We're, we're, we're still gonna, over the next couple of years, we're gonna try to squeak CPC for the money, some money to build up a fund to get to phase two.
And, and I get that, and I understand it, and that's the only option you probably have, Jimmy, but my point is, if, if phase two isn't completed, how does this board sign off on a certificate of completeness?
I don't
So this is what I'm not understanding.
And I, and I have an answer for that, and, and, and there's no question, uh, town council is going to need to help us there in terms of how you write language to modify this order of conditions. I don't know how you do that, Harry, and maybe you can't do that, but I'm hoping, I'm hoping that I'm hoping, I'm hoping that what has been built is safe and is constructed appropriately so the town is not getting involved in maintenance later and so on and so forth. And that in and of itself, what has been built, we can somehow find language that we can approve that so they can open it, but we're not approving the entire park. I don't know what that language is, but that's what I'm hoping we can do.
Why does it need our approval to open?
Well, we have to verify, we have to finish the order of conditions prior to planning board determination of completion. We have to go through our, our process.
And forgive me, I, I'm, I'm just having a little problem with this because I'm looking at it like we would look at a subdivision. Uh, I have a twelve, twenty lot subdivision. Um, we, um, approve the roadway. As soon as we approve the roadway, your surfaces are done, your drainage is done. Uh, all of a sudden, building permits are issued.
I would say instead of a subdivision, take a site plan. That's more appropriate. That's more applicable. That's a more apples-to-apples analogy.
Before you can open, everything must be done with a site plan.
Correct.
So this is not opening. He doesn't have a parking lot.
Well, now we're going, now we're going around circles. I understand.
No, you've gotta look at it like a subdivision plan wherein a, would be built, subdivisions build in phases. Um, a developer puts the roadway in, knows he's not gonna get a building permit for any individual lot until that roadway is complete, rushes to get that part in and then goes for his building permits, puts up a couple of houses and says, Mr. Inspector, can I have occupancy permits?
But that's a diff, it, it's a, it's a different, it's a, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I don't see, I see it as a different animal. That subdivision, the entirety of the subdivision, he cannot get his first house until the entirety of that road system, infrastructure, utilities, light, is all done and ready.
Precisely.
Which is, which is, this, which is, in that regard, similar to the site plan review, but they're more moving parts and they're more disparate. They're not just, they're not just the road system and the infrastructure. They are parking lots, they are individual buildings, they are different-
Absolutely. That's what I'm saying. This can't open.
But I, I think that-
According to a special permit, he can't open.
What I'm saying, we need, uh, county council to look at this and-
No, you need a modification. You need a modification to the special permit.
Well, that's what I was just gonna suggest.
Oh, okay. Well, that's why you're a lawyer.
So, so why don't we just?
That's why, that's-
Why don't we say that the, I mean, just as one possible option, I'm just, I'm gonna throw that out here, but saying we're scrapping this project, we're, we're gonna make a modification to this project, just say, the project is just where it is now.
There you go.
And say, okay, this new project, where it is now, is complete.
Yeah, that's the only way you're gonna get out of it.
That's where I'm saying that that's the language that town council or however you, that's where you get that.
And we, we vote that it's a modification, we approve the modification, they get their approval and-
Right, but at that point-
Thought you were gonna make me the test court case that's gonna go to the Supreme Court.
But then at that point, Jimmy no longer has a permit to build a parking lot. Jimmy no longer has a permit to
build a skate park. Jimmy no longer has a permit to, to do the conservation, um, rain garden.
Unless they further amend.
Oh, they need a modification too that says you don't have to build a rain garden? Have you spoken to the conservation commission numbers lately?
I'm not saying anything. I'm just, I'm just saying, they ran out of money.
I will, I will, I will.
So that they, yeah. They want to open up and utilize what they have done down there. Minus the lights and minus this and that. Another analogy is what Rob said earlier. It's a site plan. Typically, you know, a developer will try to open doors, whether it's a Dunkin' Donuts or whatever, um, and they don't have the landscaping done. You know, they might have the back part of the property, uh, not completed, but, you know, there's working with the property owner, the town-
Absolutely.
To make exceptions to the rule.
The same way Domino's was making pizzas long before we ever signed that site plan.
It's clear, there's a field down there.
Months ahead.
There, there's an access way. There's a field down there that's ready to be used. They got a dog park that's ready to be used. There has to be some negotiations made on the part of the town and, and the insurance liability issues. Everything's gotta be negotiated and the, the amending of the site plan. You know, it's like timeout, time.
Sure.
This is what we're willing to give you permission to utilize the property for in its present state. You have the insurance in place and you're dealing with town council to make sure all the ducks are in the row so that we don't have liability. And then somewhere along the line, when they do have money to finish the park and all the elements of the park that was, you know, initially approved, that's when you move forward.
We're, we're not gonna answer all of these questions tonight and they're excellent questions. Um, and I, I, I am gonna go to you guys for sure. I, I guess what I wanna do to summarize this is I, I think what we need to do is take the first step, which is to get the plans, um, get these reports, find out what, and, and review them. Find out what's missing, what more is needed, and start that process and it'll then move us down the road to, um, better understanding of what we at least have. And then we can start dealing with these questions of how do you modify the site plan? How, how much is it that we're modifying, so on and so forth. And we will address those questions as they come up.
Would it be important to know what it is that the insurance company is actually looking for?
Well, that's what we're gonna find out, Harry. We're gonna get the plans, let us start this review process and then we're gonna find out. We're gonna say, look, this is where we're at and let's start talking to the insurance company or whoever it is that's responsible. We'll have to find out how we do this.
That I think is the, that, that's the key. I think at this point, nobody knows what they want, the insurance company wants. Nobody un-
We'll, we'll, we'll find out, Harry. We'll find out. Um, yeah, let's go to the-
Well, to what Harry was saying, you know, this has been in front, Jim's been in front of the board of selectmen many times and that's what we're being told, that unless the planning board signs off on something, it's not insured. I have trouble with that, but, but, um, because of other apostles in, in town that can use, but, but it's, granted, it does need in some form, I think, to be, that this is officially open to the public. So I guess my basic question is, is I'm hoping that probably John is keeping track of what you think you need. And then if I can get a copy, can take that, I can take that to Mike Farrell, John can pass it on to Mike Farrell and, and to Jim here, so that we all at least understand also what you're all looking for. And then John also can get to the board of selectmen and what he needs to know from us also for, you know, if you say legal counsel and insurance.
To further consolidate that thought, which I think is, is right on, um, I think we, we need to establish what our desired end state is and if that's phased, what those phases consist of. Right now, what can we do to use the park as is? What is the next step that may, that may come to a stop until you get the dough to finish? But, but lay out what the steps are gonna be.
Yeah.
Yeah, what insurance is looking for.
I think, I think, I think we're kinda, I think we're kinda going around in circles right now. I really do and I, I think-
So I can simplify everything. We need to get the plans, as you said.
That's one.
We need to have Larry Graham review those plans.
That's two.
And we need to have his report in hand. Upon receipt of that, we schedule a public hearing with the planning board or a, a review of the plan.
Correct.
With the planning board. The planning board at that time figures out what additional steps need to be met by the park and rec.
Yep.
To get to the point where this planning board can sign off on certain aspects of that. And I, and then the, that can be, that recommendation can be sent to the board of selectmen. Board of selectmen can deal with the insurance issues. So insurance liability issue can be resolved based on what the plans are. The review, the successful review, anticipating that, of Larry Graham, the successful review of this planning board that leads to us sending a favorable recommendation to the board of selectmen. And that would be based on what's completed, what's safely installed, you know, does dog park need additional gates? You know, are there signs that need to be input on the driveway? You know, what needs to be done with the parking area? So we need those plans to figure out where we're at at this point. And can we just call it a day with what's been done down there with some minor health, safety, um, modifications? And then at some point in the future, when they do wanna move forward with additional, um, completion items, that, we deal with that.
I guess what I'm clear on-
I think the two, I think the two issues, um, in addition to what you just said, and, and then I kinda wanna wrap this up, is, um, uh, the plans, the, um, reports in terms of construction process and why those are so important throughout the entire process is that those are the only documentation we have for what you can't see that's under the ground that's been built.
Yep.
Without those, we're dead in the water.
Sure.
So we, those are really important. And those two items, and then exactly what John said, is then we're gonna send those out to technical review. The planning board's gonna have those and John, and technical review will come back with a report comparing drawings of as-bills to, you know, and he's gonna say, these things are all set, all set, all set, good, good, good. This is missing, missing, missing. This is a problem, problem, problem. And then it'll come back to the board for a public hearing about that where we can talk about it all.
Wouldn't, when we have that public hearing, are we gonna have clarification from the insurance folks on what precisely it is this board is signing off on?
We're not dealing, we are not dealing with the insurance. We're dealing with what is being provided for us as far as plans, as-built plans, what's been completed, what needs to be modified to meet health, safety. We send a recommendation that everything meets the requirements of health, safety issues.
Gotcha.
Whatever those are. And we have Larry Graham to spell those out. We'll work on them. But we're sending a recommendation to the board of selectmen. The board of selectmen then deal with the insurance issue.
Okay. So as long as we know what those health, safety, um, specifications are.
Right.
I, I'm not clear on what they are at this point.
I think they're gonna come from you, what, what John just said, what's your, excuse me again, but once Larry Graham looks at it and says this and this and this, is all you need to be open. If you have a house concern, now, now it's, it's open and the insurance will be covered.
So I'm getting, so I'm getting tired of talking about this now and I really wanna wrap it up because I think we're going around in circles a million times. But before I do, I wanna go to you guys over there if you had anything. I know you had some questions.
Well, my original question, I think I've answered by listening to you guys. So we were hoping that the field would be open for the spring of twenty eighteen. Sounds like that's probably not even close to gonna happen.
Um-
You know, there's a lot of unknowns because you have to get the material from Jim and have that all reviewed and then there's, there'll be some steps after that, but you know, March, April of twenty eighteen, probably not a target.
January, February, March. It's, it's gonna be tough.
Yeah.
It's gonna be really tough. Um, the, the drawings come in here, then they go out to the technical review agent. He has two weeks for his review of the process typically, is a reasonable time where he gets back to us a report. Then we have a meeting, uh, scheduled, which is typically two weeks. So probably, if everything went perfect, in a month, we would be having a meeting just to discuss what we have found for information, not resolving the issues.
So I, I've driven up there a few times. There don't seem to be any-
Hazards?
Locks or gates on anything right at the moment, but-
So that's part of, that's part of this review, that these kinds of things?
I was-
Oh.
Stop us trying, trying to relay a message there, but-
Okay, all right. I'm sorry.
Well, I've been down there. I just, we, you know, we, I, so, uh, I'm the president of Georgetown youth soccer and I'm also a member of the GAA and we represent about five hundred athletes that play soccer and we're strapped for fields. I mean, you know, you know the condition of West Street and what we're trying to do there.
Yeah.
You know, Penbrook opened up, but those are shared fields. You know, we play behind the high school. Um, but our fields are being overused and we need fields to open up. So my other question was, and I think I heard it too, is, is the opening of the field as of right now, is an all or nothing type proposition, right? It's, has to be completely built? All the phases regardless, unless you guys change that?
Unless we find a way to change that.
Yeah.
And, and I, and I'm only speaking for myself as one board member, but my goal is to find a way that we can do that. And I'm only speaking for myself.
Yep.
I subscribe to that. Certainly, I think most of us or not all of us want that open as fast as possible.
Mr. Chairman, to try to speed the process up, I know naturally we wanna get as-built plans, we want Larry to look at it. Would, would, would it behoove us to have Larry, as a qualified engineer, go down, do a walkthrough and identify any and all health, safety issues that he sees?
I would, I would-
And at that point, report back to us very quickly, very immediately, as soon as he did his walkthrough. At that point, we could rectify and open.
No, 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 no engineer is going to hang their hat on a visual walkthrough. They're gonna wanna see drawings, they're gonna wanna review drawings, because the only thing that matters in the end is not a visual accounting of what you see, but it's, it's, it's what's been stamped, it's what's on paper, it's the lead, those are the legal documents. So Larry's going to probably wanna do that anyways.
Absolutely.
But he's going to need to review the documents. Um, did you have some more?
Oh, no, that was it. That was it.
Steve, did you have, Steve, did you have anything that you wanted to say?
I have another matter.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, so there we are.
Okay.
So the sooner you get those in, the sooner we'll get them out. Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
Let's see. Yes, number three. So we're gonna go to, um, continued review. Uh, we have three items. We have, uh, unacceptable streets, legislative update for recreational cannabis. And then the last item is the FY eighteen primary department, uh, budget. So, uh, going to unacceptable streets. Let's see. Unacceptable streets, John, you wanna? And give us a summary or?
Yeah, in regard to our last discussion at the last meeting, the January tenth meeting, I did send a letter, um, to the board of selectmen about Pete Durkey's request that, um, the town consider, um, accepting the list of, um, ways that he feels, um, should become public ways. So in that letter, that everybody received a copy of, I notified the board of selectmen that in accordance with master general law, the, uh, the, the charges with them to request or not the planning board to act as an investigative body, um, figuring out what the status is of all of these roadways and determining whether or not, um, they're ready for acceptance.
Sounds like the ball's in their court.
It is. Right now, it is in their court. They have not taken action yet, but they are in receipt of that letter. So, you know, what we do is sit in pants and wait to hear from them.
Okay. Why not?
Meantime, this, this issue is on a lot of people's minds. And we do have correspondence here that I wanna hand out tonight. And that's from, um, Little Sil.
That is not on the list, by the way.
Right.
Yeah.
But they, but they, but they wanna be.
They're condominium, so they'll just live with that, won't they?
Okay, so was there anything else on that?
No, uh, other than the board, if the board has any questions. Um, but we, I took the action the board wanted me to take and now we're just waiting to hear back from them.
Okay. Thank you. Um, moving on to item number three under planning office, continued review of legislation updates on retail sale of recreational cannabis. Um, John, do you wanna?
Yeah, just, um, real quickly. Um, again, this was an item on our agenda at the last meeting. Per board action, I did get ahold of, um, town council and I forwarded everything to, um, Mike Farrell, who got his okay to communicate with, um, attorney Eichman and, um, got his response. And then I responded to him. Everybody have a chance to read through? So, you know, in, in a nutshell, we're waiting because from the cannabis commission, everything is in draft form.
Steve, would you like?
I don't, I know what he's writing to all the other towns that they represent, all right?
Yeah.
And he doesn't understand.
And we, we may wanna give Steve a chance to-
I will definitely give Steve a chance.
But I just wanna summarize everything, that, um, there are a multitude of issues involved with this and there is not one model, um, ordinance that's going to be provided. What we are trying to do is to have a joint meeting, um, with the board of selectmen. I checked with Mike, uh, right before this meeting and, um, that has not happened yet. I thought it would happen in time for tonight's meeting at the latest, but, um, they're still working on, uh, scheduling that meeting. So attorney Eichman and other representatives, in all likelihood from his law firm, will be coming here to, um- be coming here to meet with the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen, and-
That's great.
Yeah, spend a couple of hours discussing the issue, trying to figure out what we, as a town, want to put before the voters for the town meeting. And right now, it's all in limbo until these draft guidelines become-
Wow, so if I, so if I were to, so if I were to just summarize what I think I heard you say, is right now, basically, it's unclear, and a joint meeting with the Selectmen, and the Planning Board, and Town Council-
Yes.
Is going to be adjourned to-
And I'd say within the next two weeks, so I'll, I'll be getting in touch with Planning Board members as soon as I hear word of when this is scheduled for.
Okay. Steve, I'm sorry, Steve.
Towns that are not being represented by Copelman and Page are moving ahead. For example, Montague, I printed out, there's one sheet, the cover sheet, on their website is their whole draft bylaw, but it is written as a, as a bylaw, amendments to existing bylaws, so it's, I wasn't going to get into studying Montague's bylaws. That one came to my attention today, that's why I printed it out. Other towns are also moving ahead. It's a question of zoning, no matter what the Cannabis Control Commission's regulations are concerning the licensing of these entities, you need to establish as soon as possible so that businesses can, can know what to do as to where it can be grown, Montague is allowing it to be grown in basically what would be our RC district, but only grown in the RC district, no other items, subject to site plan review, production, processing, laboratories, testing laboratories, and all that other things. You just need to zone it. That's all the Planning Board needs to do.
We need an overlay district.
You don't necessarily have to do an overlay district like you did with the medical marijuana facilities. You need to choose where, we have a, a large number of 61As in town. These farmers have the opportunity, the sooner they can get in, to make some money so that they, they're not selling for OSRDs, because the town can't afford to buy it, okay? So we need to, to zone where it can be grown, where it can be processed, where it can be, products can be produced. Where do we allow bakeries? Commercial bakeries? I don't, I don't remember from my, it's been a long time since I was on the zoning board of appeals.
I mean-
But I don't believe that we have bakeries in our-
I don't think it's in there.
In our uses, all right? But that would be processing. In the meantime, speaking to the, to the people who aren't here, which is the Board of Health, you treat the producers just like you would treat any other restaurant, any other production of foods.
Mm-hmm.
Crosby's, all right? Selectmen, they need to decide whether to present a 2% tax or a 3% tax. And before anybody can apply, and this is in the guidelines that the CCC did publish for towns, before anybody can apply to them to get the license, they have to have a host agreement negotiated and approved by the Board of Selectmen, and they have to have all their zoning ducks in a row. It's not rocket science. It really isn't. It's farming, as far as the growing of it. We want to encourage, what makes Georgetown attractive, and why you have two registered marijuana facilities growing here in town, is our municipal electrical department. Chickopee has a similar situation, because they have hydro power. But that's for growing it indoors. But it doesn't have to be growing indoors.
No, follow with that, Steve, I'm sorry. Because we have-
Our electricity is less expensive.
Oh, oh, we have less expensive electricity.
It's not as cheap as it is in Chickopee, because Chickopee is like 99% powered by hydro.
Chickopee is Chickopee.
All right? But the, it, we're, we're attracted to that, we have the farms, open space farms available, and producing it. You've already been through a site plan review with the medical marijuana facility in town, both medical marijuana facilities in town. Only one's been to you guys so far?
Just the one, just the one.
Okay. But, but you know what they, what they're doing inside there is growing, processing, manufacturing products, edibles, foodstuffs, and they're selling. You, you guys already have the experience in having dealt with that, and done an overlay district out there off of 95, which is, in many respects, appropriate, but perhaps too narrow.
And in the downtown, huh? And in the downtown.
And in the downtown. Well, let's see, there's another town, let's see. Hull is moving ahead. That's another town you can check out with what they're doing. Of course, I got a call from somebody, and it's, isn't this spot zoning? There's, there's like three lots in this one part of town that's going to be allowed to be a retailer, and there's like four lots over in this part of town that are going to be retailer. One of them isn't developed, the other, others have structures that are basically following down. So they're, you know, looking to help redevelop those, those parcels. Now, the Selectmen, and with input from, from, perhaps from you, has to decide whether Georgetown's entitled to 1.6 retailers. 20% of our liquor licenses-
Liquor licenses?
Off-premises consumption liquor licenses. That includes the beer and wine at Crosby's and Johnny's. I submit that you should, and it's not really in your purview, would be to allow up to three.
Why don't I just let the market decide how many?
That's right, but that's not what the law says. But at least if you allow for, for multiple locations where retailers can come in besides just off of 95, uh-
The law's, the law's the 1.6, right?
Huh?
The law's the 1.6.
It's the 1.6, and I would certainly urge to round up to two.
But the law says that you can limit it to 1.6, it doesn't say it has to.
Well, you have to have a 0.6 retailer, Matt, come on.
No, but I'm saying, there's nothing that says we have to, that we only can allow-
No, you can have, you could, you could allow as much as the market would bear.
Right, yeah, there could be no limit.
There could be no limit.
Absolutely.
But the important thing for the zoning, for the Planning Board is determining who, where in town these things can be done, and, and the site plan review. You can, some towns, uh, some towns are increasing the distances from schools beyond 500? It's, yeah, more than 500. Uh, one town, it's escaping me, 2,000 foot, feet from any school. I mean, this is a town that, that did vote no, but doesn't want to have to go through, doesn't want to attempt to ban, because a ban requires not only a majority vote on the outright ban, but a 2/3 vote on the-
The ballot.
On the, a town meeting on the zoning that prohibits it. Because you can have the ban, and you can also prohibit it, but you're going to do it by zoning as well. But it's really not rocket science. The, the regulations, there are 170, 107 pages of regulations, and a lot of it has nothing to do with, with zoning, or, or, or whatnot. It has to do with having everybody have to give them fingerprints, and get their core rechecked.
Security issues.
Security issues, uh-
Your trucks are going to move stuff, things like that.
Yeah, well, they had a long, very long discussion about, about, because even the towns that are banning it can't keep retailers out the way the CCC did it, because they're going to be granting delivery licenses. So it behooves the town to have it available to its citizens here, and for others to come here to, to buy it, because you can get the 3%, you can get a host agreement for five years, I think it is. But the important thing is, RC district, marijuana cultivation only.
RC?
Huh?
Did you say RC?
RC, our two acre, our two acre zones.
That's residential?
No.
You're thinking, you're thinking industrial?
No, I'm thinking RC, Harry, where I live.
Residential C.
Residential C, that's the two acre zone in which the farming is, is allowed as of right? And it's where most of our farms are, like-
Okay.
Like Eleanor's Place, and whatnot.
So, okay. So anything else that's new?
No, I think, no, I think that just-
Okay.
Let's, let's start crafting a zoning bylaw. I'll get, I'll get John, as, as many links to as many sites as I can find where towns are actually moving ahead and have moved ahead. Some towns have actually already finished their work. Well, they took their medical marijuana stuff, and they tweaked it to cover it.
Yeah, there you go.
Including doing farms, allowing for, for the farms outside, because Department of Agriculture's a little slow on it, but they're supposed to be coming up with the, the less than 0.3% THC cannabis for hemp growing.
Okay.
And that is definitely a field crop.
All right, so in, in summary with this, and I appreciate all that information, we have, we're going to be having a meeting with the Selectmen and Town Council.
That's not set yet, the date?
It's not set yet. That's, they'll be telling John, and we can bring this information however we want to, you know, to that meeting, and we can have further discussions.
And I hope you'll join us.
I think that's-
I hope so, too.
You gave us very valuable information, Steve. Just, just about the fact that we can move forward. I, I don't want to delay this, I don't want this to-
So you're, you're the first person that's come here to say that we have the right, and we should be moving forward. Everyone else that's ever talked about this-
I did say it three months ago, but-
Everyone else that's talked about this has, oh boy, there's all kinds of things that we can set up to slow this down.
Right.
There, there are a number of procedural hurdles that we can put in place to, to slow this down. And that just seems to be the, the, the preferred way that the town has decided to handle this, and without any discussion, without anybody saying that that's how they want to do it, that's just what, my estimation of what I've seen from, from the Board of Selectmen has, has, has been. So having an advocate there at this meeting that would say, "There's no reason to slow this down," I think would be-
No, I, I, I don't, if you can't say anything nice about another lawyer or law firm, don't say it at all.
You understand that, man.
A wise choice. A wise choice.
Thanks, thanks, Steve.
All right.
So with that, gentlemen, um-
Have fun discussing your budget.
Thanks a lot.
Very generous. Thank you.
Steve, thank you, thank you, really.
Take care, buddy.
Budget, but before I do move on to the budget-
As the last television show, last TV show, signs off.
Signs off.
John, I just, I want to go backwards-
They're going back to Netflix right now.
I want to go back-
They are, you know they are.
Good night.
I want to go backwards, John, to the letter-
Tillie's on?
Tillie's not feeling well tonight.
Want to go back?
All right, I want to go backwards, John, to the letter that Littlest Hill addressed to me-
Yeah.
And to Mr. Bonavita, and it says at the end, "I would appreciate a written response to your request." So I, I think, from the Planning Board's perspective, I just want to, you know, mention-
Can the written response be no?
Well, I think the written response wants to be something, we, we did have this discussion.
Dear Mr. Ellison?
So can you-
No, signed Georgetown Planning Board.
Can you, um, just draft a letter-
Yep.
-John, so that we have fulfilled his request?
Yeah.
And saying, you know, we, 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 I think they came here-
For references, covenants?
Yeah.
Yeah, and just say, you know, we, we have had this discussion, and the, the board is, is not inclined to, to, to go that direction. So I'm safe.
Yeah.
Check your deed.
Well-
Do you agree to it?
Didn't we say that this was now in the Selectmen's hands, though? So why not just say, you know, a process has been put forward in this, you know, please direct your inquiry to the Board of Selectmen?
I, I guess I have no problem, you know, putting it out there that the Planning Board is, is, unless the Planning Board is in favor of it, but I'm not at all in favor of turning it, so I think-
We can't. The, the decision prohibits it, the, the-
So I'd like to just, I'd just like to let them know.
They're, they're-
All right, so that's that. So, John, FYI.
Yes.
Is there, the only question I have, is there anything different in that spreadsheet in the unit, which is a different format than the one I saw last? Is there anything different in it?
No, the numbers-
This is the actuals that this was acting for.
I know this is the actual, I, I do know that, but I just want to, I didn't compare this with the last-
We're looking good.
Budget.
We're looking pretty good, right?
It'll make it through.
Yeah, we're, we're looking all right.
Did you have anything you wanted to talk about in the budget, John?
Uh, nope.
And it's what the administration, town, town administrator wanted for-
Yeah.
Okay. You guys have anything you want to talk about?
Nope. Do we use all our money?
Do we use it?
Yeah.
In all likelihood, we're not going to this year.
What happens to that money that we don't use?
It goes into-
Back to the general fund.
And used for other things.
But that hurts our budgets going forward, I assume, if we're giving money back?
Not this year. It's not anticipated, unless during the budgetary process, they say, hey, um-
We can, we'll discuss that if that came out that way.
But we're going to have a pretty big hit for Picto this year, right? Yeah, so that's going to disappear, right there.
So we're all set, then?
We are.
Okay.
There was a lot, most of tonight was clean up of last week's job.
Um, member of Public Concerns, anybody have anything?
Cool, I got one more right here.
Yep.
One more item. We had an A&R Plan come in late Thursday afternoon, and the applicant, not knowing the schedule of our meetings, he did grant in writing a Form H extension for that through February 24th, and, so I'll put it on for the next meeting, but-
Okay.
Need a motion to the effect of granting an extension for Hamilton Terrace A&R Plan for up to and including February 24th, 2018.
Can I just say so moved, Mr. Chairman? Is that acceptable?
So moved, that works tonight?
Second.
So moved, it's been seconded, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
You need some signatures?
Nope.
Do you have any other little sticky signers there you want for?
No, that's, um-
I see two, I see two.
Well, these are Form H, we did one Form H for parish estates already.
Okay.
Did the packet go out by email this time?
It did.
You didn't get it either?
I didn't either.
I got, I got mine.
I have a funny feeling the town, the town website burped. Their, the server burped.
Do you have Comcast?
And you want to know something ironic? I sent the thing to John, what was it? Oh, no, I sent the thing to everybody, I sent, I sent an email out to everybody, saying, "I already grabbed my packet at the police station, anybody that got your email packet, because I didn't get it, please send it to me, I like having the e-copies." And your email bounced. The email I sent to you bounced.
Your email bounced.
So I, I'm just-
Eh, shall blame?
Yeah.
It bounced?
It bounced.
That told me someone else it bounced, too.
It said box full. I'll send you the headers, I'll send you the headers if you want.
No, 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 I'm really glad you-
I'll send you the headers, I will send you the headers if you're, if you're IC guy.
No, 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 no.
John, the only reason I'm bringing this up, I'm not trying to-
You told me that, thank you very much.
Saying, it's, we didn't get something you sent out, they're saying that you didn't[1738.02]